Hello and welcome to Ward Talk, CTN's look at the political scene in Ann Arbor. I'm your host, Bonnie Gabowitz. We'll be discussing issues and solutions with the city council members from our five wards each month. Joining us this month is Lynn Song from Ward Two. Welcome Lynn, this is your first time on the show?
It is. Thank you for having me. Thank you for being patient with me.
Yes, well, I know you council members are extremely busy with all the different things going on. So let's just start with getting to know you first.
Sure.
What interested you in being involved in the city government and what was your connection to this?
Sure. I was on the library board from 2016 to 2020. In 2020, I was trying to think about where I could go next if I wanted to serve another term as library board president or kind of work on the issues that I saw that were pressing in the city. And I was really excited to run in a presidential year and just see what my chances were to address city issues. I served on a number of nonprofit boards for Neutral Zone, Avalon Housing. I have my own family foundation, so I'm really close to the issues in town.
And how long have you been living in Ann Arbor?
I came here as an undergrad, so I started school here in '95, finished in '98. I probably waitress for you at Polio's, or if you remember Eastern Accents, the bakery downtown, I worked there, that's where my husband. So I've been here as a student, as a community student, as a graduate since '95.
Yeah, okay, so you understand the whole college scene as well?
Yes, yes. And I did my MSW too, after I was married.
Yeah. And do you have a professional background as well? Is it nonprofit or is it just administration?
Mostly nonprofit. I worked on anti-trafficking and international adoption for quite a while. So I worked with the State Department, FBI, state attorney generals. We helped ratify, there was an organization in DC, we helped ratify the Hague Convention on inter-country adoption. So mostly investigating adoption fraud. That work was pretty hectic, so I kind of tried to see what I could do more closely at home and everything from being PTO president for my kids' schools to, again, nonprofit board work.
So you have a lot of experience in different, actually different aspects of life here in Ann Arbor.
Right.
So let's talk about your ward in particular, Ward Number Two. I know there's been a lot of work with the TC One project. So can you update us on that? We haven't talked about that in a couple of months.
Sure. So TC One is a new rezoning designation that we've seen already implemented in other parts of the city, more towards the mall and along Stadium and Maple. So what we're trying to do is see where we can do it, the last areas, which would be Plymouth and Washtenaw. The idea is to encourage more dense development along very, very busy transportation corridors. We still have over 80,000 daily commuters coming in and out of the city. And if we can help folks live more closely to where they work and not become commuters, I think it would really improve traffic, it would improve affordability, it would meet our environmental goals.
And are there areas that are available for development?
Probably, it's not that many, not that many, but there are opportunities. So a good example, I know council member Chris Watson has spoken about this too, is the infill project. So there's one infill project on the Plymouth Road Mall area where there's the Starbucks, I think massage place that used to be the front parking lot in front of where Flim Flam used to be, but is now Samba Cafe, where the library used to be, but now is, you know, Market and Rappore in the back behind there. So being able to introduce more businesses and actually two-story businesses, potentially with housing above that, hasn't actually been a negative for those neighboring businesses. That was the fear initially when it was built.
Would you call that neighborhood also the North Campus of the university?
That's right, that's right. Because it's right across from where Pfizer used to be.
I was just there yesterday as well.
Oh, yeah.
At the bookstore, yeah.
Well, it stretches up to that point. So what we're really looking to do, and I think it's really timely because the university just launched a plan to redevelop. So their Campus 2050 Plan, Campus, I think, 2030 Plan, there are two plans. And how they'll develop their parcels along Plymouth Road especially will be really important to follow because where the NCRB is, the former Pfizer building area, one of the ideas they have is actually to put a hotel, hotel conference center across from there. And that would be great, you know, we're really hurting for more meeting space in Ann Arbor.
Yeah, I know, a lot of, there are a lot of entities that have people coming in for short terms for whatever, I know performances and conferences and whatever.
Yes, I used to be on UMS's board, so UMS was always looking for space too.
Right, right. And in terms of what's happening, there's more than one TC development, right? But it's TC One that is specific in your particular neighborhood, in your ward?
Well, it aligns with what we've been doing by the mall, along in 4, 3, 4, off of Maple, Jackson area. So for this to be the last part of the city, to get on board with this, it'll look different, but the idea is that we will be able to control against projects that we don't want, which are, you know, one purpose, one story, more mini malls. You know, we have room to build up. We have, a good example actually is on Plymouth and Green, kitty-cornered bushes, there's where Sweetwater's is, and there's housing above Sweetwater's, housing above Bandido's.
So that's the kind of development you're looking for?
Yes.
Maybe commercial in the lower floors and then housing upstairs, yeah. Talking about housing, I know this is a concern for the whole city in terms of the winter weather and people who don't have housing, what is your ward doing about that?
So our ward really only has one public housing area, and that's where Community Action Network, a nonprofit manages that, and that's through our Ann Arbor Housing Commission. Green Baxter Court, which is the neighborhood feeds into King School and to Clegg, where my children go to. And it's kind of unfortunate that we don't have two or three more communities like this in our ward. And I really think it speaks to how we have our kind of communities in different areas, either downtown with Lori Terrace, or, well, we've got Lori, we've got Maple Manor, or Miller Manor, and then we have another neighborhood in Ward Three, where also Community Action Network helps organize neighborhoods. I really wish Ward Two could accommodate more communities like this, more Section Eight housing. But it is a concern in that, you know, in our neighborhoods, we do have a number of social workers, teachers, folks who work in social services with organizations like Jewish Family Services.
So you work together to see if you can get some kind of vouchers? Or just to help, is this like a short-term situation for people?
Homelessness?
Well, in terms of being, trying to help these people, you're looking to have people placed in a rental apartment, let's say for a year, for a lease?
So that's really short-term and that doesn't solve our housing crisis. We actually need to build units for people to live in, to rent long-term in. Our housing crisis is really coming out of lack of supply, homelessness is directly related to lack of supply of housing, and also COVID, ARPA funding, federally funding expiring. So the evictions that we're seeing and--
So there's no eviction protection anymore?
No, not, that's, COVID, we had actually a moratorium on evictions that the federal, the federal government helped us with, and helped us with paying for rent in the county, and that has expired. So what we're seeing, in Ward Two, we're not seeing a significant impact on homelessness and vouchers being distributed because there's just lack of supply. We do see some more residents coming into the McKinley properties with Section Eight vouchers, and that's a good thing. Because the rate of homelessness that we're seeing increase from last year, this time last year to this time this year, has doubled when it comes to the number of families who are homeless. So last year, we had about 300 families, and now we have close to 700 families who are homeless.
Okay. All right, well, that will be a topic we'll continue to be covering each month. Just a quick mention on the bicentennial this year, it is now 2024. We have a big celebration that will be going on all year round. This month, we'll be starting with the official celebration. But I see that on your website, you'll have a calendar of all the different events happening throughout the city.
Right.
Throughout the year. So tell us a little more about that, just that it starts with the big celebration this month, right?
This month, this Friday, there's a kickoff, Destination Ann Arbor's hosting that. I plan to be there. It'll be, I think it'll be a really good year to talk about how Ann Arbor's changed and the changes that need to come. This is also the Year of the Dragon, so for Asian-Americans, we're the largest minority population in Ann Arbor. I think we're at 17 or 18% of the community. And Year of the Dragon is kind of like the completion of the 12-year zodiac cycle. So for me, and I know community members, I know this is a significant year. So hopefully, this is a good year to talk about this community, how diverse it is, what are we celebrating, what else we can work on.
And with all the concerns we have, we want to also look at what we've accomplished and what the positive aspects of the city is now, especially looking back at how it was in the past.
Oh, I go through the archives for the library. It's amazing the things that have happened here in Ann Arbor, especially when it comes to housing, always addressing, you know, these surges in population after every war, university.
Well, when we come back, we have quite a few other topics to discuss.
Sure.
We want to hear from you, so please email us questions to ctn@a2gov.org or tweet us at hashtag #CTNAnnArbor. We're taking a break now and we'll be coming back with more from Ward Talk. Hello, this is Bonnie Gabowitz. We're continuing with Ward Talk. I'm speaking this time with Lynn Song from Ward Two. Lynn, we were talking about the housing crisis, and I just wanted to continue that subject a little bit more and some of the other ramifications of the economics going on. We do have a lot of organizations that are trying to help work with the city and help people in need, especially as you mentioned, there's an increase in people who need more help.
Right.
Either with housing or with, you know, food or both.
Right.
Trying to get jobs. And some of the organizations have reached out, and I know there's one you were particularly involved with, that's the Jewish Family Services.
Right, right.
And what's happening with them? How are they helping?
So JFS is the agency in Washtenaw County that resettles refugees. My parents were refugees from Vietnam and Laos, both are ethnic Vietnamese. So this is a cause that's very close to me. There is an emergent situation where the organization is looking to resettle a family of seven with special needs children. So we're looking for a house with four to five bedrooms with a wheelchair access, a wheelchair ramp. It'd be great if we could find an Ipsy Ann Arbor area so that the children can receive the services that they need. I don't know if folks are familiar with the resettlement process, but it means everything from trauma therapy, language assistance, finding a job, transportation. It's a pretty intense process to welcome our new Americans here.
Okay, and also, I know a lot of people are volunteers that help out with that organization.
That's right. We have, there's a food pantry, a halal food pantry. What I love about Jewish Family Services is that it's a, it's an organization that meets a variety of needs and has worked throughout the pandemic so that all community members, including seniors, they also have a senior meal program, are cared for.
So it would be worth for people to go on their website and see what the services are and what the volunteer opportunities are like?
Yes.
Okay, and the other aspect of these new conditions is the need for feeding families.
Yes.
And I've seen, even in my emails, that organizations are reaching out, asking for people to donate supplies for food containers, water bottles, all kinds of food and, you know, supplements that go with it. Because the food pantries and the places that are serving meals are being inundated with increased people coming through their doors.
That's right, that's right. I just had a call with the Shelter Association, the group that runs Delanis downtown, that's a county-run, but has, it's also an independent nonprofit. We're seeing an increased number of seniors, homeless seniors too. Food costs are so high, if we, if there's a way to donate food, to volunteer to cook, to deliver, there's Ipsy Meals on Wheels, there's Delanis, there's many ways to become involved. There's also our warming shelters.
Now, is this information that can be found on the website? If someone wants to help someone in need to get information, that's a good resource?
A good resource is the Washtenaw Housing Alliance. So that's a membership group that includes Delanis, Shelter Association, Avalon Housing, our religious institutions who volunteer and actually man and provide spaces for warming shelters. So Washtenaw Housing Alliance is the central place for that.
Okay, now, I know it's a little ways down the line.
Sure.
This is now January, but we need to talk about the election coming up because voters need to be aware of what they need to do to make sure that they're registered and they have no problems getting their votes in. So tell us a little bit also about the election center that is being planned, that's down the road a couple of years, right?
No, it's this year. We are, this is part of the, so there was some anxiety around trying to chase down state funding before the end of the last legislative session last year, and asking for state funding. It was three city clerks who petitioned for funding election centers, it was Ann Arbor, Grand Rapids, and Lansing. All city clerks came together and said, please, we need, I think, the ask was for $3 million for each city to acquire property to have election centers.
Now, was this federal or state you were looking for?
State, state.
State, okay.
So we didn't get three, but we got one. One is better than nothing, so we now are able to acquire property so that our city clerk has space to process absentee ballots. In 2018, I was on the executive committee of a group that helped push through a state proposition so the absentee ballots could be more available. Promote the vote was really essential as we came into the 2020 elections, and now here we are in 2024. In 2020, folks were, you know, we were in the middle of COVID, absentee ballots were really important for folks to access voting, I think, and here we are with another surge. But I hope it's a practice for folks to register for your absentee ballot by now.
Right. And this, right now, will the polls be changed at all, or will the people get notices?
You should be getting notices.
Polling places changed?
Yeah, a couple have changed. So here in Ward Two, we used to, there was one polling station, it's now actually merged at King Elementary. So we had a polling station at the Methodist Church off of Green and Glacier. They're no longer participating as an election site. So now whoever has gone to vote that site will now have to go to King's School.
So people really need to pay attention to where the voting place is?
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay. And you've been involved in some commissions and committees, I know you wear more than one hat as a council member. Let's talk about the Armed Response Project first, before we get into that.
Sure.
Because I know we've been talking for months about having some kind of available intervention to support people who need, are in emergency situation, but it's not a situation that police need with their, you know, with their guns and their holsters. It's an emergency, it could be a mental health emergency.
Right.
Or a physical health emergency. And I know you were, you had looked for some kind of company that would come in and offer a program where they would come in and respond to these emergency calls without having to involve the police. But the one company entity that responded didn't really come up to what you needed. And so I'm curious to know, just briefly, you know, what didn't they offer that was so important that you turned it down? And number two, how do you find another entity to come up with another offer? Because it sounds like a tremendous, you know, it's something that's going to be really hard to do.
But it's not unheard of. So what we had based this need on was on existing programs in other cities, specifically Kahoots in Eugene, Oregon. But there are also similar programs in El Paso, Harris County, Dallas, Houston, where what you see is through the 911 center or a separate number, folks who are experiencing some sort of crisis have the option for a non-police response. I think if we can just backtrack a little bit on the history of this, this came out of a resolution, I was a co-sponsor of this, Mayor Taylor actually was the, initiated this. I came on board and I asked if we could bring on some voices specifically from the public health angle. City council prior to me being elected had voted in favor of a resolution that said racism is a public health crisis. And I felt like this was a connection to this. And it also spoke to what we were experiencing with COVID, right? And after George Floyd's murder, what does it mean when Ann Arbor says Black Lives Matter? In this resolution, I pulled a U of M public health professor, I pulled the chair of our Police Oversight Commission at the time to help inform the resolution so that we can actually bring Ann Arbor's voices to this versus just political heads who want better for the city. And then out of that, we voted that through, and then it came through the budget cycle, and then it came through ARPA budget. So we have two sources of funding for this effort now, which should really demonstrate the political will and our commitment from city staff to actually put this into action.
So it shows that there's a lot of support for this.
And there's a timeline. So with the ARPA federal funding, we have to dedicate it and spend it by 2026. With the general funding, you know, that's a different matter. But I think the confusion in the community is that when we put out the RFP, that kind of ends the political process. So the political will is there, the budgeting is there, now it goes to the staff. And our city administrator and our city attorneys are really the ones who oversee that, because if electives intervened in RFP, then that's corruption. You know, we can't, we can't show our biases, we can't direct our executive to show favoritism or refuse to acknowledge, you know, certain bids. It's a bid to actually become a service provider for the city. This particular RFP that was submitted by known leaders and community leaders that we know and care for and work for in many other ways, did not meet the city's expectations. But that's not to say that they can't submit again, and it's not to say that it's, I don't know how to, it's not personalized.
Right, right.
It's a process, it's bureaucracy, you know?
Right, right. But I understand that one of the things that you wanted that wasn't offered was that there'd be 24-hour service available, including weekends, and that's not what they were offering, but that's what you really needed.
It's what we needed, but it also speaks to the capacity for an organization to do this without experience. And that, but we also don't have this experience, we're all learning and doing at the same time, right? So it really, we really need to look at these other cities and see how they've done this. And one thing that stood out for me when I had initially really advocated for this was the collaboration. So it wasn't just the service provider contracting with the city, in other areas, in Texas, for example, they had the local medical center providers, so the local hospitals, local philanthropy, the community foundation, and the municipality coming all together to help fund and staff and coordinate responses. Here, we're kind of doing it in a way where we've gone through community engagement to secure the funding and know what the community wants, which is the 24/7 response.
Okay, so the bottom line is, this isn't finished.
It's not finished.
It's not finished. This will be the continuing story, and we still have a little time to get this worked out.
And the city works within the city, city budget, city staff. I think the dreams of organizers is to make this a county-wide effort. So hopefully, we can hear more from our county officials and state officials to see how funding might come through that way.
Okay, and in the 30 seconds we have left, time just flew, just give me your personal take on your experience of being on the council.
It's been, it's been an honor. I never thought I would run for office, honestly. I thought I'd just work in the nonprofit sector, be a full-time parent, and I've learned so much. I feel like I'm a geek in every way, I'm a policy geek. You know, I've always asked, how do things work? Who are making, who's making decisions and who's missing from the table? And I feel like the past couple of years, we've been able to bring up voices and faces in council and local elections who we've really been missing.
So it sounds like you're very grateful for this opportunity. I want to thank you for your service.
Oh, thank you for having me.
And good luck with everything.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Remember to join us for a new episode every month. We want to hear from you, so please email us at ctn@a2gov.org. Attention, Ward Talk. You can also follow CTN and ask questions on Twitter at twitter.com/CTNAnnArbor. We'll make sure to include your questions. To watch this and all of CTN's other programming, head online to youtube.com/CTNAnnArbor. For Ward Talk, I'm Bonnie Gabowitz. Until next month. Until next month.